Thank you. Immediately, I'll hand over the gavel to Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen, or in this case Chair Kim Nguyen of the Garden Grove Housing Authority, to conduct the housing authority business.
Thank you very much. This is a reminder, please mute your phones unless you are speaking. City Clerk, may you please take roll?
Commissioner Brightigan?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Bowie?
Here.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Here.
Commissioner Solario?
Here.
Vice Chair Deidre Wynn?
Yeah.
Chair Kim Nguyen?
Here.
And Commissioner Beckles is absent tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment?
No.
In that case, I'll move on to consent items, where I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the consent item.
O'Neil, I'll move it. I second it.
Thank you. That's a motion from O'Neil and a second from Bowie. May I please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Brightigan?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Solario?
Yes.
Vice Chair Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion received. Eight yes votes.
Thank you. Up next, we have a public hearing. We have Item 3A.
Item 3A is adoption of the annual plan for fiscal year 2021 for the Garden Grove Housing Authority, and Mr. Wynn is here to give the report.
Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the 2021 Annual Plan for the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. The plan is a comprehensive guide to the housing authority policies, operations, and strategies for meeting local housing needs and goals. The housing authority is required to submit this plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development prior to April 17th. In 2019, the housing authority received a CMAP score of 100%. CMAP is a combination of self-audit and data submission to HUD that measures the performance of the housing authority. A score of 100% qualifies the housing authority as a high-performing agency. The authority was able to maintain this rating through 2020 and as a high-performing agency were only required to complete a streamlined format of the annual plan. A resident advisory board comprised of six tenant participants of the Housing Choice Voucher Program have reviewed the plan and their comments are attached. The public hearing has been properly noticed on January 6th and 13th. It is recommended that the Housing Authority Commission conduct the public hearing and adopt the 2021 Annual Plan. That concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions from Commissioners? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
No, there isn't.
Any Commissioners wishing to make comments or ask questions?
O'Neil, I'll move it.
Brightigan, I'll second it.
Before you both do, let me close this public hearing.
Oh, I thought you closed it already.
Sorry, I didn't close it yet. With that, we have a motion and a second. May I please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Brightigan?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Solario?
Yes.
Vice Chair Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion received. Eight yes votes.
Thank you. Moving on to matters. Do we have any matters from any of the Commissioners? Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting and pass it back to Mayor Jones for City Council.
Thank you. Okay, we will adjourn the city council meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Brightigan?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen, may I ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute. If everyone can please stand and face whatever flag you have readily available and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you. That takes us on to oral communications. Madam Clerk, do we have any oral speakers?
Yes, we do.
President, Chairman?
Yes, we do. We have Maureen Blackman. Just want to give her a moment.
Good evening. The role of Nick Dibs and Craig Durfee will be played by Maureen Blackman tonight. Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. First, I want to express my condolences to the family in the passing of their beloved Father Mayor Dalton. He was an icon in this community, and his spirit needs to be emulated more and more these days. One reason I'm here tonight is to talk about the explosion and graffiti that seems to be in our city. It's quite out of control. I'm not sure how to find the root of the reason for it, but the causes, but I do know that you can't really have a viable, beautiful city when every corner is marked like dogs marking their turf. So I'd like to see if we could figure a way out of that. I also have a question for the city manager and economic development. I know that we'll be getting some CARES money, or COVID money, or whatever you would like to call it, and I would like to know if the residents have any say in the way the money will be spent. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers present?
We do not have any other speakers, and we did receive some written comments from Mr. Craig Durfee. His topic was blighted Gilbert north of Chapman before the Walmart cell towers. It includes trash, lack of tree maintenance, fence that has been cut, overgrown tree onto the street, peeling paint on the cell tower, and overgrown weeds, and also water therapy. He is requesting water therapy in parks for improving mental health. The other written comment is from Mr. Brian Malley, and he wanted to thank the city council for increasing the size of accessory dwelling units to 1,200 square feet, but he does have concerns about setbacks being too narrow and that homeowners do not have to live on site. And lastly, we did receive a letter to the council from Dotte Apur. She's a 50-year resident of Garden Grove, and she's concerned about the increase of homelessness the city is experiencing with accompanying issues as it relates to public property such as parks and the overall rights of use and enjoyment. And that's all we have.
Alrighty, thank you very much. With that, we will recess and go on to other legislative agency bodies. We'll start with the successor agency. So I'll go ahead and do that one as Chair. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll for successor agency?
Member Brightigan?
Here.
Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Here.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. Okay, we already did oral communications, so we'll move on to consent items. It's just receiving files of minutes. Can I get a motion in a second?
I move the motion.
I'm seconding it.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Brightigan?
Yes.
Member O'Neil?
Yes.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay, that takes us on to public hearings. Items 3A and 3B are also listed on our city council agenda, so general counsel, is it possible to open both city council and successor agency together so that we could take action on these two items concurrently?
Yes, Mayor, you can do that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go to 3A.
Item 3A is adoption of a resolution to approve transfer of property located on the north side of Acacia Parkway between Nelson and Main Street. And as the mayor mentioned, this is a joint action item with the city council, and Mr. Guerrero is here to give the report.
Good evening, Chair, Agency Members, Mayor, and Council Members. The item is to adopt a resolution to approve property transfer to implement the wind down of the dissolved redevelopment agency. The property is accessor parcel number 089-201-32, number 54 on the long-range management plan. The triangular remnant parcel is approximately 675 square feet. It's approved with a fire hydrant and was appraised at fair market value at $3,500. At this time, it's recommended to adopt the resolution approving property transfer between the city and the successor agency and authorize the execution of the grant deed. That concludes staff's report, and staff is available for any questions.
Hello?
Oh, my gosh. Sorry, I was on mute, guys. I had asked, are there any questions of staff? Keeping in mind, this is a public hearing, and so we will open the public hearing momentarily. Any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, are there anyone wishing to speak on this item?
No, no speakers.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Colleagues?
O'Neil, I'll move it.
Brightigan, I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. And this is for both the agency and council.
Member Brightigan?
Yes.
Member O'Neil?
Yes.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Item 3B.
Item 3B is adoption of a resolution approving transfer of a portion of a public alley located east of Rocking Horse Road and south of Garden Grove Boulevard, and this, too, is a joint action item with the city council. Mr. Guerrero is also here to give the report.
Good evening, Chair, Agency Members, Mayor, and Council Members. The item is to adopt a resolution to approve property transfer to implement the wind down of the dissolved redevelopment agency. The property is accessor parcel number 100-4504-74, number 49 on the long-range management plan. The long and narrow remnant parcel is approximately 1,481 square feet. It's part of an existing public alley and was appraised at fair market value at $500. At this time, it's recommended to adopt the resolution approving property transfer between the city and the successor agency and authorize the execution of the grant deed. That concludes staff's report, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, anyone wishing to speak on this particular item?
No, there is not.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Colleagues?
O'Neil, I'll move it.
Second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Brightigan?
Yes.
Member O'Neil?
Yes.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from Agency Members? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn to the sanitary district, and so I'll hand the gavel over to Councilmember Bowie, or President.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. Madam Clerk, could you please call roll?
Member Brightigan?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Here.
Vice President O'Neil?
Here.
And President Bowie?
Here. All right, auto-commission already been done with the city council, so we move on to consent items. We have two items, 2A and 2B. Do I have a motion?
O'Neil, I'll move it.
I'll second it, George.
Correct. Could you please call the vote, Madam?
Member Brightigan?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Vice President O'Neil?
Yes.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, so next item matters, any matters from Board Member or General Manager? Hearing none, I now adjourn the meeting back to the city council. Mayor Jones, take over.
Thank you. We'll reconvene city council, and that will take us on to consent items. It's recommended that Items 2A through 2I be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Do I have any requests to pull?
Yes, Mayor, if I could, I'd like to pull 2D, please.
Okay. Any others? Or a motion for the balance?
I have motion at Deidre.
I'll second it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Item 2D, as requested by Councilmember Klaufenstein.
Thank you, Mayor. I realize that we, I know since I've been on council, have celebrated and proclaimed April 2021 as DMV Donate Life Month for many years now. I just wanted to spread special awareness and notice to April being Donate Life Month. It doesn't take long to sign up for the state authorized donor registry. You can do this while you renew your license, or perhaps when you're getting a new license or ID card. And most people, I don't think, realize the impact or truly understand firsthand the meaning of what it means to truly give life through organ donation. But my family was affected firsthand by this. My husband's father was placed on the organ donor list and finally received a double lung transplant in February of 2020. So we know, we don't know the donor, actually, at this time, but we honor them and we're very grateful and with humbled hearts, our family was able to keep their father, their brother, son, uncle, and grandfather. So I think it's just extremely important to recognize that these organs give second chances and create new miracles every day. So I just want to remind the community to sign up, and you can do that at donatelifecalifornia.org. And I know that information is readily available through this proclamation and through our city, and I'll make sure to post that on my council Facebook page as well. So with that, I'd like to motion this proclamation for Donate Life Month in April.
Wow, I would like to second it. It's really touching that, to hear that from someone that we know. Thank you, Councilmember Klaufenstein, for sharing this information with us. It's greatly important of, you know, organ donation. We never know. It could touching someone, you know, close to us.
Very true.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Alrighty, that takes us on to public hearings, but we've already concluded those two items concurrently with successor agency. So we can move on to Item 4, which is ordinances presented for a second or third reading.
Item 4A is the second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 2920. It's entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Amendment Number A302021 To amend the city's official zoning map to change the zoning of the property located at 9312 Chapman Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential to R3 Multiple Family Residential."
Okay.
This is Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen. I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
O'Neil, I'll second it.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Item 4B.
Item 4B is the third reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 2919. It's entitled, "City of Garden Grove Approving An Ordinance of the City of Garden Grove Approving Code Amendment Number A272020, A Zoning Text Amendment to Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to the Regulation of Accessory Dwelling Units and Junior Accessory Dwelling Units."
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen, I move the ordinance.
Second it.
Roll call vote, please.
How are we discussing?
Yeah.
Councilmember Brightigan?
No discussion, but no.
Wait, are we, yeah, we're doing a vote, right?
I thought we were going to have discussion, but that's fine. I still vote no.
Are we ready?
Were you asking for a discussion, or are we going straight to a vote? Sorry, just trying to clarify what you're just...
Go to the vote.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
No.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Five yes votes with Councilmembers Brightigan and Klaufenstein voting no.
Alrighty, thank you. That takes us on to matters. We do have several items listed, so we'll start with 5A, as requested by Councilmember Klaufenstein.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm honored and extremely proud to be serving on the advisory board with the Boys and Girls Club. And recently, I was speaking with Rochelle Gilerman, and she brought to my attention that April 19th through 23rd is After School Professional Appreciation Week. And obviously, we know how greatly important that is for our children, especially over the course of this past year, to have a safe and nurturing place to be after school or just with parents working and essential working and so forth. So these professionals give our children a safe place to be. They give them activities, socialization, and obviously further education. And so I thought perhaps we could honor their accomplishments and community contributions in April. So I have a proclamation, and I don't know if that's something I need to read aloud at this time. I'm bringing this up for discussion to potentially vote on this or agendize this for the next council meeting.
Yeah, you don't need to read it at this time. You can just add it for adoption at the next meeting.
Is that the...
I'll second it, though.
Any other discussion, or should we go ahead and, we've got a motion in a second to bring it back?
Yeah, I just would like to suggest that this is a worthy proclamation, and I would suggest, Councilman Klaufenstein, to make it an annual. Since you authored this proclamation, I think you should have the honor to make it an annual proclamation. It's up to you.
Yeah, no, thank you. That would be wonderful. I appreciate that.
Really quick to clarify, I believe when the proclamation is made, we do, we bring it back and it's added to our annual calendar. Is that correct, City Clerk?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. 5B, this is an informational COVID-19 update on community services programs, as requested by City Manager Scott Stoss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recently got an update from John Montanes, or Community Services Director, about some of the things that they have ongoing this spring and summer. And he has a short presentation, just three or four slides that I thought would be interesting for the council members and members of the public to hear about. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Montanes.
Thank you, City Manager Stiles. Good evening, Mayor and Members of City Council. Tonight, I want to give you a quick snapshot of what the Community Services Department has been working on the past couple of months. As you all know, we've been working with our vaccination pods, both with the Garden Grove Hospital and Christ Cathedral pods these past couple of months. We have registered and assisted in vaccinating over 1,100 Garden Grove seniors and residents since February. Tomorrow, we will be vaccinating an additional 450 seniors and residents, and it'll be the last of our first-dose clinics, followed by three weeks of our second-dose clinics over at the Christ Cathedral. Our senior center and family resource centers have also been working with Meals on Wheels to be able to get our seniors' meals throughout the week. We've been serving about 2,000 meals to our seniors, both at our senior center and home deliveries. 300 to 400 food boxes to families have also been distributed through our two family resource centers weekly. Our sports fields are beginning to become more active with less restrictions. Our competitive sports have returned. We have soccer, baseball, and football that have been allowed to play competitively. Forty percent of our fields... Forty percent of our fields are being used with permits with our local sports groups. Such sports or activities like tennis and outdoor badminton are also currently permitted and are including doubles for those type of sports as well. Before it was only singles, now they're allowing doubles. So those sports are ongoing. Our indoor sports are not permitted until the yellow tier. So our gymnasium remains closed until we hit the yellow tier. Alright, our Buena Clinton and Family Resource Centers continue to help our clients virtually. Our Family Resource Centers continue to have bilingual parenting classes, teen-girl support groups, mental health workshops, and coping with stress and anxiety classes. Our Family Resource Center in Buena Clinton has created some creative virtual programs like Family Paint Night, our teens and money management classes, and breaking unhealthy relationship classes. And those have all been very successful, a lot of attendance in those virtual classes that we've been having. On April the third, at Atlantis Way, next to Atlantis Park, we will be having our excavation event. It'll be eight dollars per child ages three to ten. That event will be from ten AM to one-thirty PM. It'll be drive-through, similar to our Winter in the Grove. And so if anybody's interested, I will later on in the slide, I will give the recreation number where people can call for tickets. We are looking at some of our summer programs now. We are trying to move forward with programming for aquatics, day camp, and concerts and movies in the park. We are looking to do restricted, obviously, classes with our aquatics class and day camp using some of the COVID guidelines. And then with our concerts and movies, we're looking to do particular pods in order to keep people in their, within their own households. Again, this is kind of our plan as of right now. We're coming up with a Plan A, Plan B, and a Plan C depending on the restrictions as we get closer to the summer. Some of those restrictions might loosen up, and if that's the case, we'll obviously be able to be a little bit more flexible and allowing more participation in our summer programs. And then our Prop sixty-eight grant, which is Park Development Grant through the state. We submitted an application last year. Unfortunately, we did not, we were not granted the, an awarded grant. However, there's a round two of these grant applications. And so we submitted on March twelfth for round two for Woodbury Park to completely renovate that park. This time around, we reduced our scope by about one-point-eight million, which allowed us to be a little bit more competitive. Last year, we noticed and got reports that, you know, a lot of the grants that were awarded were within the six-million-dollar range. And so this year, we reduced our scope to kind of put us into that same range of six-million dollars to be a little bit more competitive. So we're hoping to find out by the end of the summer if we have been awarded that grant. So then I just wanted to quickly share some photos from our vaccine pods. This is at the Christ Cathedral. And then some photos from our meal distribution over at our Senior Center. Again, both of them have been very successful. It's something that the Community Services Department has been very proud to be a part of in helping our community. And so we will continue to do this as long as we need to. So for more information, if anybody wants to know about our upcoming programs and schedules, they can go to GG Parks and Rec dot com. And then any senior citizen sixty-five and older who still needs assistance with getting a vaccine or they want some information regarding our excavation event, please contact us at the Community Services Department at seven-one-four, seven-four-one, five-two-zero-zero. And this concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Jones, couple of question, couple of question for John.
Go ahead.
Sure. I've been advocating, you know, asking the City Manager to advocate the county to vaccinate more people. If the City of Long Beach now vaccinating everyone eighteen or older for their residents only, I do not know how the City of Long Beach can do that and other cities cannot. That was something that I would like, you know, we try to find out, you know, what are the difference? And see if we can, as a city, vaccinate all of our residents, eighteen or older, just like Long Beach had. If there is a good reason for that, then that's fine, but if, but I think we, we need to ask. Secondly, I think now that the state and the county health agency allow people in the food and agriculture sectors, including restaurants and food-to-go operatives to be vaccinated. I don't understand how could the county and the state allow that and yet people that are important in the city is not, other than the frontline people, you know, why other city staff cannot do it. I am anxious to have all of our city staff being vaccinated and, and so that we can open some of the services at City Hall so that we can provide, you know, better services for our residents. Is that something that, that you, John, and, and, you know, City Manager try to address that with the county or the state agencies?
Yes, Councilman Bowie, this is Scott Stiles, City Manager. Yes, we're actively trying to push for that as, as much as, as we can. So, you know, just as you indicated, we have a number of our employees that are disaster service workers. And we're making good progress in getting our employees vaccinated. But you're exactly right. We don't have everybody, and I think we're gonna get there shortly, but we're going to keep pushing for that as much as we can, most absolutely.
Yes, just to quickly tag on to what City Manager Stiles says. Yeah, we're working with a couple of groups right now who are hopefully being able to bring additional vaccine pods to, to Garden Grove. And in that, some of our requests have been that, that if we are looking to do that, that they, they do allow for some of these other tiers to open up. So more information due to come on that, yeah.
Last comment, I heard that the state now will no longer disprove the vaccine through the county health agency, but, but I heard that they are directly working with any group, clinics, anyone who want to, or pharmacy to, you know, receive the vaccine directly from the state instead of going through the county. If that is the case, I would strongly recommend that we get in touch with our state representative, you know, Tom Umbert, Senator Tom Umbert office, or Assemblywoman, Assemblywoman John Enwin, or Assemblyman Tom Daley to find out, you know, how to, and maybe they can help us getting the vaccine directly from the state. Hopefully, we can get more and, and can help with our city staff.
Yes, Councilman Bowie, that, like, like I mentioned, I think some of the groups that we are working with potentially could be getting them straight from the state, but like, as more things get confirmed, we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Anybody else, or should we go ahead and move on to five C? Okay, five C, and this is an informational COVID-nineteen update on the American Rescue Plan. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. As referenced by Speaker earlier, the American Rescue Plan is approved by Congress and the President is, that some of the details are starting to get, are starting to roll out, although we still have a lot of questions and guidance that we're waiting to get. And so we've got a number of slides here today that I want to go through with both you and for the community that will give a little overview about some of the things that we're thinking about. I'm going to be going over some of the slides in the beginning along with some comments from our Finance Director Patricia Song. And then we're going to turn it over for Lisa Kim, our Community and Economic Development Director, to talk about some slides that she's prepared. And then our Senior Management Analyst Sean Park is going to give us an update on a number of slides that he's been working on with COVID statistics that we hope you will find it helpful. It's something, some of that, those stats, I've talked to the Mayor Pro Tem and some other folks about. So hopefully, some of those, that information you will find helpful. I do want to say for anybody trying to watch these, some of the slides may not show up perfectly over our YouTube video feed, but I want to let everybody know if you're trying to furiously write down all of this information because we're gonna go through it pretty quickly. All of the details, these slides will all be downloaded either tonight or tomorrow morning. So we want to make sure that everybody has a lot of access to it. Before I get into the slides themselves, I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the American Rescue Plan as we've understood it and that it was really intended to change the course of the pandemic and, and deliver immediate, immediately, immediate relief to folks. So as many people have heard, it, it begins with a one-point-nine-trillion-dollar funding plan for economic recovery. And that will include everything to help with the National Vaccination Program and to safely reopen schools, a great deal of assistance to families, which includes the fourteen-hundred-dollar relief payments we've heard about, unemployment insurance, tax credits, and other things that we'll, we'll show a little later on. And then support to communities, grants to small biz, and that includes grants to small businesses, funding for state and local governments, a lot of which I'm gonna talk about tonight as it relates to this, to our specific city government and to transit agencies. Specifically, as I mentioned, funding for, for local governments, there's sixty-five billion dollars in the, in the plan, fifty-point-six million of which has been allocated to Garden Grove. And there's gonna be more details in this presentation about that. You're going to hear that the guidelines are going to indicate that it will come to us in two, in two dispersments. The first dispersment being about sixty to seventy days from now, which I would anticipate to be sometime in June. And then the second dispersment, I don't know if they're exactly gonna be in fifty-fifty dispersments, but the second one would come twelve months after that. And we're, we're still, as all cities are, we're waiting a lot of specific guidance about the funding and how it can be used. So, and then I'm gonna talk a little bit later in our slides about the priorities that we have. And so for, I know my friend who's moving our slides around, I haven't started on the first present, first slide presentation yet. But one of the things we're gonna be talking about are, are priorities as a council. We're trying to stay focused on the priorities, council members, that you've laid out for us in the budget. And of course, throughout all this, we've got, we're preparing our next biennial two-year budget as well. And so with, with all of these resources, we're trying to stay focused on keeping our, our budget balanced and maintaining critical reserves, infrastructure projects, and then public facility, public safety issues that I know are important to you, and then a number of quality of life issues. And then the other thing I want to do before I get into the slides is mention that transparency is very important as part of this. I anticipate us setting up a, a specific transparency page that puts all of our documents on the American Rescue Plan at one easy place for everybody to look at. And we're gonna have many more of these discussions around the American Rescue Plan with you. And I think as indicated earlier, we'll, we're trying to figure out ways to solicit a good, meaningful community input for this, which I know is important to all of you. So now to begin with the slide presentation, let's, we can skip to the overview, the cover page of our slide. If you go on to slide number two, this just talks about the components of the one-point-nine-trillion-dollar Rescue Plan Act. So in that, it, this slide breaks down the various components where all the funding will go. And if you're looking at this slide, you'll see that three-fourths of the way down, one component of it is money for state and local governments to the tune of three-hundred-and-fifty-billion dollars. And among that, you'll see that about a hundred-and-thirty-billion dollars of this total plan goes to localities. Going on to the next slide, of that, of that amount of money that goes to state, state and local governments, six-hundred-and-fifty-billion dollars of it goes to cities to be used for everything that's allowable that you see here on the screen, emergency, to address emergency effects of COVID, government services to help us in the reduction of the revenue that we've lost. And that people here will certainly know that, you know, we've lost upwards of twenty-million dollars or expected to lose that amount in hotel and TOT tax revenue because of the devastating damage to our hospitality and tourism industries. It's used for investing in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. It does, one of the things it doesn't specifically say is funding for roads. And that's a point of, of guidance that we need to find out more about. And of course, as I, I've seen some articles out of the Washington DC, there's also some interest in doing a, a secondary infrastructure funding plan. So there could be more, more resources there that we could be looking at along with pay for eligible workers performing essential work during the pandemic. It's important to, to note that there are disallowed uses that they've clearly said we can't use. And that is you can't put all that money into our unfunded pension liability. We can't also use it to directly or indirectly delay or offset tax cuts. So those are a couple examples of things that we won't be able to do. Going on to the next slide, we do, this is where we specifically want to show the allocation of cities is sixty-five billion dollars. The estimated amount to Garden Grove is about fifty million. And this is again where I talked about how the money will come to us in two dispersments that you can see. And all of these allocations to cities are based on our Community Development Block Grant entitlement awards. So it's not just based on, on population, it's based on community development, CDBG needs as determined by the federal government. So you'll see all of our cities in Orange County are getting different amounts, even cities that are relatively close in population. But it has to do with the entitlement awards distributed. Going on to the next slide, you've talked, I want to just talk briefly about some of the priorities, council priorities that I've, I've mentioned. And we've got four areas where we're, we're, we know that we, that we believe you want us to spend time and attention on. Number one certainly is trying to get ourselves out of this COVID recovery and continuing to have a balanced budget, protect our reserve funds. The long-term financial picture of the city is critical. Certainly, infrastructure is very important to the, to the community. And if there's ways that we can use these funds to help with our long-term street funding plan along with other water, sewer, and infrastructure issues, we're going to be paying close attention to that. Public safety is obviously always critical to us, maintaining our staffing. We know that we have a, a police headquarters building that's badly in need of replacement. And we've talked a lot about that and other crime reduction strategies that, that Police Chief DeRay and his team, our team is thinking about. And then the other area that's foremost on our mind are a number of quality of life issues. Code enforcement, parking, trash, homelessness, graffiti, signage, all those things that I know you get lots of calls about, we get lots of calls about it. And those issues are of, of a big focus for us. Going on to the next slide. And again, this is intended to be a big picture overview. Again, we're looking, we're awaiting a lot of guidance from the Department of Treasury on this. And so we need to be thinking about that. As I mentioned, we expect, you know, we have lost a significant amount of revenue through March of 2020 to date. 90% a loss of our, of our hotel tax revenue, over $25 million. So, you know, this is, this money is going to be a godsend to us to helping us continue to provide services. And when we're, when we talk about that, you know, I'm specifically referencing, how can we maintain some of those city services? At the last budget, we defunded 22 positions except for sworn public safety positions. But we're going to be looking to restore those defunded positions with, a lot of which will help us with those quality of life issues that you've talked about. I will mention that our Public Works Department took, took a big hit with those 22 funded, defunded positions. So we're hoping this is going to be a big infusion of help for them. Deferred maintenance, deferred equipment and capital purchases, all very important things for us. Onto the next slide. A little bit about the administration of the funds. There are some certain steps that we need to take, but not a lot of them, considering the amount of money that we're receiving. We do have to submit a certification of need, which we'll certainly do. And I think that is more of a formality than anything. It's important to mention that all of the funds are expected to be expended by the end of the year 2024. So it seems like a long ways away, but it's, it's really not in terms of what some projects might entail. We'll certainly have to do periodic reporting related to all of that and paying close attention not to use, put this money to ineligible uses that we could end up having to repay back at a later time. So that's clearly something on our mind. Onto the next slide. We included this, just this information for you, certain one-time revenue generated from non-operating activities outside the city's normal operations or committed by formal action of City Council. And that's related to our reserve fund policy, which I think Council very rightly put into place a couple of years ago to protect our reserves and our long-term fiscal viability. And this is the general concept that this is, this is one-time uses and one-time sources and, and trying to apply that to one-time uses. So we'll be talking a lot about that. On the next slide, I know this is, this next slide is very small and it's going to be hard to read for folks trying to watch this. But we have full-page versions that demonstrate, that we'll, we'll use to put on our webpage for the American Rescue Plan and the impacts to, to California. So as you look at, at these two documents, you'll be able to see these on our website. And they're good summaries of exactly what's in the plan and what's allowed, what's not allowed. So at this point, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over. Let me first ask our Finance Director Patricia Song if she has a few brief comments to make. Otherwise, we'll turn it over to Lisa Kim.
Thank you, Scott. I believe you covered all very well. We just want to, you know, the council and the residents to know that this particular rescue plan has a, a more wider ranging purpose than what has been allocated or allowed previously under the CARES Act. And City Manager Stiles has clearly outlined the priorities that we have set for these funding sources. And, you know, we've been focusing on the aids that's for local governments. And I believe our Assistant City Manager Lisa Kim will be taking, talking about our plan for economic recovery and how the ARP relief funds can help. Lisa?
Thank you, Patricia. And thank you, City Manager Stiles. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. If I could ask I'd like to shift to the ED slide for me. That would be great. So as Orange County has returned to the red tier, all indicators show that the transition to the orange tier is likely in the very near future. And so our Office of Economic Development has prioritized really developing and updating our economic roadmap for the city of Garden Grove. First, we're in the process of currently updating our 2018 Economic Development Strategic Plan. As the council may recall, this was a three-year roadmap that was adopted back in 2018. And it was timely for us to really advance a review of that document and really identify what our key priorities would be for COVID recovery. As you can see on our slide, we're focusing on, on small business resources, working towards workforce development initiative. And that is primarily focusing on individuals impacted by COVID and are currently in transition and assisting them with resources to get them back into the workforce. A lot of that is working in resume writing, assisting them with interview skills and working with two of our nonprofits to provide those services. We're also working continually with GGTPC and Visit Anaheim on addressing our recovery related to tourism. And we anticipate bringing the updated 2021 Economic Strategic Plan to the City Council sometime in May for approval and adoption. And it will detail further some of our goals and priorities. Next slide, please. I'm going to delve a little bit into what the ED Strategy Plan will include and what we're doing right now. We're not waiting for necessarily for the document to be before you. We're taking initiative. So we're working with some of our resources. This, our Office of Economic Development has access to CoStar, which is our real estate database of all available properties in the city of Garden Grove. Right now, it's, just as an example, there are approximately 700 commercial sites within the city of Garden Grove that have been then identified within, that are currently retail-serving uses. And among that, there are approximately 124 spaces that are currently identified as vacant in the city of Garden Grove. We are targeting these vacant properties and these vacant spaces by reaching out directly to our brokerage community and our property owners and communicating to them the available resources we have in terms of small business and loans and grants, as well as our workforce development program. We're also collaborating with the Small Business Development Center, our local chambers, and just sharing information that is currently in the pipeline, not only related to our local resources, but as well specifics relating to PPP, IDOL, and all the resources that are coming through the pipeline under the American Rescue Plan. In terms of our outreach, we have completed our, our first town hall meeting with SBA and SBDC the first week of March. We have two additional webinars planned via Tri-City Effort. We have our first on March 31st in collaboration with Cities of Fountain Valley and Westminster, in which our, our business resources and SBA resources will be presented in Vietnamese. We are also collaborating with our Korean Chamber on the same day alongside Cities of Buena Park and Fullerton and presenting that SBA resource in Korean. We also have our workforce program that will, a webinar will be highlighted in conjunction with our local Orange County and LA Building Trades Group alongside Ocapica and Standard for Kids, in which workforce development resources will be presented on March 30th. Lastly, I do want to highlight that as we are mapping out the next action plan with our annual entitlement allocation through CDBG that Scott briefly highlighted earlier, we are recommending and continue to recommend that a portion of those funds be earmarked for job creation and job retention. So you'll see in the next month, when the action plan is brought before the council for consideration, we are continuing to recommend approximately $800,000 to fund our jobs first initiative for both business grants and loans. Our next slide, we'll talk a little bit about what the American Rescue Plan includes in terms of targeting assistance for small businesses. Approximately $7.25 billion has been infused into the Paycheck Protection Program, which is the PPP. And these funds go directly to the lenders and all of our small businesses that are interested in seeking the next round of funding, there are resources available and we would extend our assistance through the Small Business Development Center to provide consultation and any additional support that may be needed. There's an additional $20 billion that's been allocated and administered through SBA to fund the targeted IDOL advanced grants. And something specific to note, in the first round of the IDOL grants, there was a $10,000 small business grant that was associated with the original IDOL application that was deployed last year. This is a cleanup item. Some of these small businesses did not receive the full amount of the $10,000. Some may have received a lesser amount. And so the allocation of the $20 billion is to really reevaluate some of the earlier applications and process them to receive the, the full $10,000 advanced grant. Due to the limited funding for $20 billion, they are targeting businesses that are located in low-income areas first. And so additional information will be forthcoming relating to this program. Lastly, there is $28.6 billion that has been funded to create a new restaurant revitalization fund. At this time, there are no guidelines that has been brought forward in terms of how the program will be administered and the fundings would be allocated. However, in our conversation with the Small Business Administration and the Small Business Development Center, it is likely much of the guidelines would follow the shuttered venue operations program, which was recently deployed in the last three weeks. So again, we are monitoring all this information and will try to continue to initiate webinars and coordination with our local business groups to make sure that they receive the most up-to-date information. And that concludes my report.
So council members, before I go on to Sean Park to go over some of the health equity and vaccination information that we prepared for you, I just thought I'd stop for a second, see if there's any questions about the American Rescue Plan, at least for now. Like I said, we're certainly going to be coming back with more, more and more information. There's a lot that we still have to, that we're still waiting to learn. And as you can see, there's money in this, in this program. Some money is for city governments, some money is for families, some money is for small businesses. And so there's a little bit of everything. So it's a lot to go through. And that's why we've got to keep coming back to you. But I'll turn it over to Sean. But, but first I wanted to see if there were any questions. Okay, no, no questions for now. Sean Park, our Senior Management Analyst. Sean, do you want to go through some of your COVID slides?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Members of the City Council. This presentation is intended to provide you all with an update on the city of Garden Grove's efforts as they pertain to health equity and vaccination distribution here in Garden Grove. So moving on to the first slide, according to the Orange County data dashboard, there are currently two dates. There have been 249,539 positive cases in Orange County. And specifically in Garden Grove, there have been 16,364 positive cases. As it pertains to deaths, Orange County has had 4,607 deaths to date, whereas Garden Grove has had 356. The Orange County test positivity rate is currently at a 2.2%. And the Orange County Health Equity Quartile Positivity Rate is at 3.5%. Next slide, please. As you guys are all probably aware, the County of Orange is currently in the red tier or the second tier, moving down from the purple tier. And that is as a result of the adjusted daily case rate per 100,000, which is currently at four. The test positivity rate, which is currently at 2.2%, and the health equity positivity rate, which is at 3.5%. Once you see this slide, there we go. You'll see that the test positivity rate and the health equity quartile positivity rate are highlighted in yellow because they currently qualify for the orange tier. However, you'll see, you'll also see that the adjusted daily case rate per 100,000 residents, which is at four, is currently in red. Once that moves down, everything will be able to shift into the next tier. Next slide, please. So health equity is something that has been discussed at great length throughout the COVID-19 vaccination distribution process, and it's for a good reason. According to the CDC, health equity is defined as the attainment of the highest level of health for all people. Achieving health equity requires valuing everyone equally with focused and ongoing societal efforts to address avoidable inequalities, historical and contemporary injustices, and the elimination of health and healthcare disparities. In other words, health equity essentially refers to the unequal distribution of and access to healthcare resources wherein with certain communities, whether it be low-income, black, Latino, Pacific Islander, have been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19 in terms of higher rates of infection, hospitalizations, and deaths. Next slide, please. Health equity is currently measured by the California Healthy Places Index using 25 indicators. Some of these include economic factors, social factors, education levels, transportation access, housing, environment, and neighborhood conditions. And as a county with a population greater than 106,000, we must ensure that test positive positivity rates in the most disadvantaged neighborhoods do not significantly lag behind that of county, the county test positivity rate. And as we saw in previous slides, the county health equity quartile positivity rate is currently at 3.5%, while the test positivity rate is at 2.2% for the county, suggesting a deficit of 1.3%. Next slide, please. When we get to this next slide, you'll see that a map of Garden Grove will emerge. And looking at this map specifically, we can see that there are disparities even within our own community here in Garden Grove. This map shows the California Healthy Places Index of Garden Grove, broken down by census tracts using the 25 indicators previously mentioned. As you can see, and are probably already aware, the 92840, 92841, 92843, and 92844 ZIP codes in Garden Grove include disadvantaged communities and neighborhoods with less healthy conditions and greater barriers to healthcare accessibility. And in fact, they're highlighted in blue on this map. The darker the shade of blue, the more disadvantaged the community. Next slide, please.
While we're waiting customers, we're here. It's very difficult for me to follow the presentation.
While we're waiting, customer boy here, it's very difficult for me to follow the presentation because a lot of the slides doesn't get updated on my screen, so I keep behind in terms of seeing what you guys are showing.
Sure, I'll be sure to wait until the slide comes up to begin speaking. So now you should all be seeing the slide titled "City Efforts to Address Health Equity." So despite the existing health equity concerns that we're currently facing, the city has been working diligently to address them. Most notably and mentioned earlier would be the Christ Cathedral Health Equity Pod that city staff have been collaborating with the Christ Cathedral on to provide vaccinations to the elderly residents here in Garden Grove. In addition, the city has also been offering resident outreach and assistance with OTHENA registrations, providing multilingual staffing across OC vaccination pods, and of course, providing rental assistance, small business assistance, meals on wheels, and food pantry distributions, among others. I think we need to move one more slide forward, please. Thank you. So moving from health equity to vaccines administered in OC, as of March 22nd, there have been approximately 1.15 million total doses administered in Orange County and 743,671 individuals who have received at least one dose of the vaccine. Now of those, 335,228 have received the first dose only, and 408,443 people have received both the first and second dose. So this slide is in the presentation to provide some more information on the different vaccines that are being administered in Orange County and the number of vaccines for each. So as you'll see here, Pfizer and Moderna have been distributed and administered quite more so than the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which has come into play a little bit later. But still, it's an interesting slide to see that there are people receiving both. Okay. This graph here shows a number of doses that have been administered since December 2020. And as you can see, there's a positive trend with the number of vaccines or vaccinations being administered increasing month over month. Aside from a slight dip shortly after February, you see that the trend is increasing, and we hope that, you know, as more pods and as the tier system allows for more eligibility, that this trend will continue to increase.
Customer man boy again, the slide that I showed up in my browser doesn't correspond to what you are talking about at all, even when you were waiting for it to show up on your browser.
I see, okay. Let's see if we can get on to the same page. The slide that we're currently looking at should say the percent of Orange County population with at least one dose by age group.
No, the one that's on my browser is showing that 7.25 billion lenders, 20 billion SBA, and 20.6 billion for restaurants.
And it's the correct one on the television right now.
It's the correct one on YouTube.
Well, I don't know. I use the browser, so maybe I should switch to the YouTube version instead.
Yeah, or maybe try refresh.
Yeah, try everything that doesn't work. Let me go to YouTube.
Also, city staff provided us with the presentation, and although this might be confusing for the public, it will be posted on our website so they can refer to it later as well.
Yeah, but I just want to follow what he's saying, so it's easy for me to follow what he talked about. But anyway, on the YouTube one, it seemed to be the current one, other than the browser. Okay.
Okay, perfect. So this next graph here shows the percent of Orange County population with at least one dose, broken down by race and ethnicity. So in Orange County, you can see clearly that white residents have received the greatest number of vaccines. This is at least one dose, followed by Asian Pacific Islanders, and then Hispanic residents.
I don't think I have to wait anymore.
Okay, and this graph here shows the percent of the Orange County population with at least one dose, broken down by age group. And it shouldn't be surprising to see that 65- to seven-year-olds have received the greatest number of vaccinations, followed only thereafter by those in the age group of 75 to 84 years old.
I'd say it's obvious there's some technical difficulties with the slides. Just probably best to just read the report, and you know, if the slides catch up, that's fine. If they don't, that's fine. We can post it on the city website for anyone who's interested.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. There's actually only two slides left, so I'll just read through the information, and we can make sure everyone else gets the rest via the city's website. So the second to last slide here shows the percentage of individuals 65 and older that have been vaccinated specifically in Garden Grove. So looking at this, in Garden Grove, approximately 67% of Garden Grove seniors, 65 and older, have been vaccinated. Might be a little difficult to see with the shades of blue, but that places us in the second darkest shade of blue. And moving on to the last slide, I'll go ahead and just provide the information, even if it's not loading right away. This slide is titled "COVID-19 Vaccination Distribution," and essentially just shows which phase that we are currently in. That is the active phase in OC, Phase 1A, 1B, which includes individuals ages 65 and older, as well as individuals ages 16 to 64 with medical conditions. The sector also includes those who work in childcare, informal and formal, as well as education, food and agriculture, emergency services, and those who congregate or reside in larger settings. And with that, that concludes this report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
And Sean, this is Scott Stiles. Thanks again for your presentation. I know we were jamming you up a little bit with how quickly the slides moved along. Just two quick comments. Your last slide was appropriate because, just a reminder to the public, you know, we are hopeful that we will soon be moving into the orange tier. As Sean said, two of the three metrics are in orange now, and we should be getting some updated information from the county that we're potentially, we'll be going into the orange tier this week for the second week, which means we could move in that direction operationally next week. So we'll certainly be getting that information to council and to the community as soon as any of that comes up. And I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to remind any of our current residents, anybody listening, that the county is receiving more vaccine. Please go to othena.com if you're in that tier of 65 or older, or 16 to age 64 with underlying conditions. There's a number of different areas where you can hopefully get signed up quicker. And I also, for those two tiers of people with underlying conditions or seniors, please feel free to, please call our community services department at 714-741-5200. And we want to, we have some resources to help people get vaccinated and to answer questions if you have that. So, Mr. Mayor and council members, I know that was a lot of information, and more to come in future meetings, but that concludes our information.
Awesome. Thank you very much for the presentation. We'll move on to matters all go around the horn. Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen, anything?
Just really quickly, want to thank staff for putting that presentation together. It was really helpful to have all that information. It clearly indicates some areas that we need to pay closer attention to. I had the privilege of volunteering at the first day of the pod at Christ Cathedral, and want to thank Linda Moran, our EOC Operations Coordinator, and even a huge shout-out to John Montancho's staff, because we encountered some pickups there, and they were able to round up the troops and, you know, make sure that we're being able to get our residents vaccinated and focusing in our senior Latino communities. So just want to thank staff so much for that. Other than that, just want to wish my dad a happy belated birthday.
Councilmember Stephanie Klopstein.
Thank you very much. Just two quick things. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to speak with the Daisy Girl Scout troop at East Gate Park, obviously all safety protocols in place. I was able to talk about local government, being a council member, and everything that they get to do volunteer-wise and that I have done in the community. And this was all to help them acquire their democracy badges. We had a wonderful time, and I loved all their questions and comments, so I wanted to mention that. And then briefly, on the 25th, which is this Thursday, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30, I want to invite my colleagues and any members of the Garden Grove City staff to a virtual open house of vector control. It's just a great way to learn more about the summer's campaign and what the district's going to be doing in terms of mosquito control over the summer. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fat Booy.
Nothing by me today.
Thank you. Councilmember Tu Hau Nguyen.
Just want to give a shout-out to our city staff, especially for those volunteers at the Equity Pod at the Christ Cathedral for the past couple of Wednesday. I have an honor to volunteers as well with the staff. I think they process everything will go very smoothly, and I will continue to volunteer for every Wednesday into April. So a big kudo and shout-outs to our staff. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember John O'Neill.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I just wanted to acknowledge the St. Columbas Church Women's Council recognized our local grocery stores, specifically the Ralphs over at Euclid and Chapman, and also the Stater Brothers over there at Magnolia and Chapman, to present them a banner and a certificate from the city. And I know the mayor and I were there, and Councilmember Booy was there, I believe, at Ralphs. And basically honoring the workers there, the local heroes of keeping our grocery stores stocked so we can keep fed. So thank you very much to the Women's Council there at St. Columbas. Also, on a personal note, I know we're going to honor Mr. Dalton later, but my personal heartfelt condolences to the Dalton family. I truly don't have a memory without the Daltons. I've lived here my entire life, and I went to school with Mayor Dalton's daughter Pam. We went through St. Columbas together, I think from '71 through '79. So the Dalton family was very entrenched in the local community, and not tooting their own horn, but they were there to help folks, especially Mr. Dalton and the police department, his wife at the school, helping in any way we could. It was really back in those days, and it still is. It's a local community trying to help each other out. And my sincere condolences to the family, even when you know that these things are coming, and until the day happens, it's very tough. But we're all with the Dalton family, thinking of them. Our sincere condolences, and can't say enough about their contribution in the police department, fire department, local services here in Garden Grove. Like I said, they're in it. When Mayor Dalton was elected mayor, or even council, he was all in. He didn't, you know, that was his job, so he didn't back away from that, and really appreciate him. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Bradham.
Yeah, a few things here. First thing, my dad and mom both celebrated their birthday this week, so I just want to put out a happy birthday to both my mom and my dad. And, secondly, Wallet Hub, I don't know if you've seen the article, but Garden Grove was ranked in the top 100 happiest cities of America, happiest cities in America. Actually, we were in the top 50. We ranked number 40, and I think that was awesome kind of a thing, and it's kind of a testament to our community and how we feel about each other, and how we live, work, and play together here in Garden Grove. So, you know, it's kind of a testament that. So I just wanted to make that known. We are ranked as one of the happiest cities in America. Also, every year, last couple of years, I get a lot of angry emails and texts and Facebook posts and stuff because people didn't know about the excavation event put on by the Parks Department. It's an awesome event. I know it was discussed earlier, but, you know, people don't hear it for whatever reason, so I'm going to put it out there officially once again, April 3rd. It's a great event for the kids, set up for K to eight. It's going to be April 3rd from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. And if you're interested in getting a ticket for that, I believe they're $8, and you can call the city at 714-741-5200 to get your ticket. And let's see, the next thing, I've been contacted a few times involving this Resources for Small Businesses, as was discussed by Lisa Kim, our Assistant City Manager. They're hosting a Korean and Vietnamese webinar on this, in Vietnamese and Korean language, and that's coming up soon. However, if you don't speak Vietnamese or Korean, it is also posted on YouTube, and if you go to YouTube and just type in Town Hall Small Business Resource Webinar, that information is available to you if you're an English speaker or you don't speak Korean or Vietnamese. And my last, or second to last comment, I know it's totally up to the mayor's discretion. I would really like to urge the mayor to reconsider our three-minute public comment. I know, you know, I think maybe we can go back to five minutes when we have fewer than five speakers. But, you know, I've had a couple of people comment to me that they didn't feel they had enough time to complete their thought or that, whatnot. And I get that sometimes people come up and they're very critical of us, and it's hard to listen to, but honestly, that's why we're here, to hear the people, even if we don't like what they have to say. So I really urge the mayor to change his policy back to five minutes unless we have more than five speakers, and then I get it, you know, we don't want to, you know, sit there all night, but I think it's time, and we should consider that. And again, lastly, you know, I know that the mayor's going to talk And again, lastly, you know, I know that the mayor's going to talk about Mayor Dalton, but, you know, he, he, I, I mean, nothing can be said about what one man can do for a city, and, and he, he just epitomized that. You know, I knew him when he was still working for the police department, and, and I was involved in his first campaign when he was running for city council, and he went on to be an institution in Garden Grove. And so, you know, my condolences to the family. You know, he, he has really made an impact on our community, as well as all the Daltons. They've been involved civically in, in all kinds of boards and commissions, and you name it with the city over the years, and they've really, really made an impact. But they will be missed, and, and my condolences to the family.
Thank you. City Manager Scott Stiles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just two quick things. Just a reminder to council members for register, for people that are registered, we'll be back out at Christ Cathedral tomorrow all day, registering seniors and people with underlying health conditions, so that partnership continues. It'll be the third week for people getting their first dose. So again, if you're hearing this and you need to get registered, call the city or go on othena.com. Secondly, we're trying to do this virtually this year. We want to invite all of the residents, anyone graduating from college or university this year, and man, how, how hard has that been during the year of COVID? We want to honor you at our virtual Garden Grove College Graduates Reception again, that's going to take place on Friday, May 14th. This is a free virtual event for local graduates, where city council will recognize those achieving students. There'll be some, there'll be some opportunities to win cash prizes. The deadline to sign up is Friday, April 6th, Friday, April 16th. Just go to visit, just visit ggcity.org and find out how to participate and be recognized. We'd really like you to call us or log in. Businesses and organizations can always participate by becoming a sponsor, and we have sponsorship opportunities on the website as well. So we want to do that, and I just want to join in with everybody else in my condolences to Mayor Dalton and his family, and I want to, I look forward to hearing the mayor's comments. That's all.
Thank you. General Counsel, do we have anything to report out from closed session?
Yes, Mayor, this, this evening, the city council did have a closed session to discuss litigation, and there was no reportable action out of that closed session.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I've got some remarks I would like to share as we're all getting our hands around the passing of former Mayor Bill Dalton. So I'd like to respectfully honor former Garden Grove Mayor Bill Dalton, who sadly passed away yesterday. Bill Dalton was always, will always stand high among many great Garden Grove mayors who are remembered for their worthy actions, dedication to public service, and valued leadership. Besides his many mayoral qualities, Bill was a generally good, genuinely good man with a huge heart, kind and courteous to others, deeply proud of his family and community, and truly deserving of the enormous trust, respect, and admiration Garden Grove placed in him for 40 years. In 1967, Bill and his wife Sandy settled into Garden Grove when the company he was working for sent him to Los Angeles to manage their plant. Bill's desire to become a police officer spurred his move into the Garden Grove Police Department in 1972. During his 26-year career with the GGPD, Bill earned the highest honor awarded to an officer, the Medal of Valor, for saving the life of a hostage during an attempted armed robbery without the use of deadly force. He retired from the police department as a lieutenant in 1998. That same year, his calling to public service took a new turn as he was elected to the Garden Grove City Council for a four-year term. In 2002, he was re-elected to a second term. Only two years later, in 2004, he became mayor of Garden Grove and was re-elected in 2006, 2008, and 2010. Among several city accomplishments, Bill created strong relationships with the Garden Grove business community, implementing a new recognition program, and personally visiting more than 200 local businesses. He ushered in a new era on Harbor Boulevard that replaced crime-ridden establishments like the Fire Station Motel and the Pit Karen for a future tourist zone that would create thousands of jobs and become the city's largest revenue source for essential services and programs for the community. He also worked to bring together and serve all of Garden Grove's various ethnic communities, supporting projects like the Buena Clinton Youth and Family Resource Center, and participating in annual cultural celebrations such as the Arab American Festival, Tet Festival, and Korean Festival. On behalf of the city of Garden Grove, I express my deepest condolences to his wife of 59 years, Sandy Dalton, and their children, their five children, 14 grandchildren, and 17 great-grandchildren. Thank you, Bill, for being such an incredible example of public service that sets the bar for those who continue to serve in this amazing community. On a personal note, Bill was a dear friend of mine, a trusted confidant, and a mentor for many years. Although the city of Garden Grove will miss him greatly, we will never, ever forget him. So with that, we will close this meeting in his memory. Thank you, everyone, and have a very good night. We will adjourn at that point. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.